The Berlin Board of Education, committed to continuous improvement.
This is our September 10th, moved to September 12th, Board of Education meeting, so we welcome you. We start all of our board meetings with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, we are really happy to have a board meeting in our schools. This is the start of a new kind of routine for us. So, thank you Matt for hosting us this evening.
Our pleasure. We're glad to have you all here.
I am going to kind of re-initiate one of our old protocols and that's at the start of our meetings. We'll introduce ourselves along with any administrators who are in the room, so if we can start with any administrators that were here, I see there's a couple in the back of the room. Just introduce yourself and what you do.
General Director of Business Operations.
Eileen Eustace, Principal at Berlin High School.
Hi, I'm Erin McGurk. I'm the Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Matt Correa, the Principal here at Willard.
I'm DeHolly, I'm the Director of People Personnel Services.
Next, Soraya Slay, Teacher at here at Willard.
I'm gonna start over on this side with the board, so that by the time we get over to Jenna, she gets an idea.
I'm Jay Fisher, Board Member.
Jamie Miller.
Redundant.
Tim Oakes.
Brian Beding, Superintendent Schools.
I'm Matt Tenza, I'm the President of the Board.
Richard Royan.
Julia Dennis.
I'm Jenna Smalley, and I'm a Student Representative.
Thank you, and we are really excited to welcome Jenna to our group. She is our Junior Class Representative. This is her first night, and they noticed that Alex is not with us tonight because he's at a football function, so she's gunning this first one on her own. Don't worry, we got you. Alright, so welcome. The first thing we have this evening is a student presentation here from Willard, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, and we're excited to see this.
Well, I have a small intro for you all, but then the best part of our presentation tonight, part of my back to you all, is we have student representatives from Ms. Pesavento's 5th Grade Classroom, and Ms. Pesavento is joining us as well too. Well, we wanted to start, Jay, I'm gonna make a move on this one. Next time, I'll move you on the other side. What we really wanted to showcase here at Willard tonight and share with the Board of Education is our continuous belief and practice of morning meeting. And we did a lot of work this summer together, and last year as well, really thinking about what was important to us, and I know that aligns with what the Board believes is important, the social, emotional wellbeing of every student and staff member in our district as well. So, let me start off by sharing with you that Ms. Pesavento, her students are gonna do a little activity here. It's gonna involve some of you all here, so I think you'll have a lot of fun. But, to really start you off with morning meeting, well, what is morning meeting? So, I want to share just a little background with you. Well, to understand morning meeting, you have to understand Responsive Classroom. And really briefly, and I can share this with Brian and Airley, or they can share it with you all. Responsive Classroom is just an evidence-based approach to really teaching students and really tapping into their engagement, making sure we're taking care of the academics, but also their social, emotional wellbeing. We want them to come to school and be excited to be here, but we also want to, first and foremost, from day 1, all the way to day 180, really take care of those relationships we build and maintain with our students. Part of Responsive Classroom is morning meeting. There's a lot of, if you go to the website for Responsive Classroom, there's a lot about academics, and they certainly do have great ideas and approaches for teaching, for learning, lesson planning, a lot of what aligns with our Berlin Learning Outcomes about creativity and innovation and choice, and really aspiring teachers to teach that way. Well, part of it is morning meeting, and what morning meeting really is, is a way that we here in Berlin, in all of our elementary schools, start our day. The start of the day is 8:45 when all students come in, and we all join together for a morning meeting in every classroom. And our specialist teachers who do not have classes, because our classes don't start till 9, they join it. All support staff are encouraged to go and join a class's morning meeting, so they get to really build their relationships with our new kinders and our new pre-k students, but also reignite those relationships with our 1 through 5 students. Morning meeting takes place every day. Everyone joins in a circle. It's approximately about 15 to 20 minutes, and it's a time that we really value and find sacred here in the building. So, there's four parts to morning meeting, and Ms. Pesavento and our student representatives are gonna make this come alive for you very shortly. The first part is greetings, and that's really just what it is. Students and teachers greet each other, and they do so by name. When you walked into Willard today, I hope you saw our video out front. Our First Willard Pride Goal in September is always greeting people by names. And that's why you saw us all with our whiteboard up there, and our First Willard Pride Assembly really talks to everybody about the importance of greeting individuals by name. If you don't know someone in the hallway and you're in a rush, a "good morning" and a "hi" works really nicely. But you can also, there's ways to ask people, "Excuse me, I don't know you. What was your name again?" So, that's something we really try to teach during morning meeting all month long, in addition to what else we're doing. The second part is a share, and this is a time when students get to share their thoughts, their ideas. They talk about their lives, or they can talk about any kind of global issue that's appropriate for their grade level. The third, this is a share that took place last week. I was in Mr. Mastriantis's class. Mr. M is a 3rd Grade Teacher there at Willard, and in his class, I just wanted to give you an example. Everyone is facing each other. When I visited Mr., they invited me in for morning meeting, and when I was there, Mr. M was stressing to everybody to make sure that, only the 2nd week of school, make sure you're giving people eye contact, make sure you're looking at them, you're providing active listening. And that day, I think, 3 people were asked to share it if they'd like to. A lot of classes have a rotating schedule. The third is a group activity, and this is something to really kind of get you going in the morning, and something you do collaboratively with your classmates. And then the fourth one is a morning message. Morning message is important here, and I have 2 examples, plus you'll see Ms. Pesavento shortly, of what morning message really looks like. It's something we do in our pre-k to 5 classrooms. Here's Ms. Flums. She is a 1st Grade Teacher here at Willard. And her example was, "Good morning, 1st Grade Friends. Today is Wednesday, September 12, 2018. This morning, we will take a sneak peek before we start a new book. Then we will break words into syllables." This was her way of introducing that word syllables to our 1st graders. "Can you think of a way we can fill a bucket? I'm excited to see you, I'm excited to see you make amazing choices. Let's work hard and have a great day. Love and smiles, Ms. Flum." With a greeting like that, of course, you'd want, you'd want to be in there. Here's an example of 4th Grade, and this was Ms. Theriot, who's 4th Grade Teacher here, and she started off, "Dear fairgoers, what is your favorite thing to do at the fair? With our fair coming up this week. Please respond in 3 words or less. Have an amazing and not wild Wednesday." So, this one's a little more interactive, where the kids come in and they actually take part in the morning message, and they can share a few things too. Barb was also using it as a teaching tool to see if anyone caught, because they were talking about letters. She shared with me, unfortunately, nobody said anything to her yet about the "F" being a lowercase and not in the reading of the letter being a capital letter, but this is an example of a 4th Grade morning message. Short, welcoming, but again, asking them to participate. And there's so many benefits to morning meeting and integrating Responsive Classroom. Start of the day with a positive tone, encourage engagement by giving students meaningful choice. That teacher language is important, and dish that communication overall. The sense of community, and that's something we strive here as a building, as a classroom. It's something that we're always working on, all the way up to the last day of school. And then again, the teaching of the 21st Century Skills. These morning messages may not have offered opportunity for innovation or creativity, but teachers try to integrate that to align with our Berlin Learning Outcomes. So, at this time, you know a little bit about Responsive Classroom and morning meeting. Ms. Pesavento, it is your turn, and I will go through the slides for you and for us to represent this.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ms. Pesavento. I am a 1st Grade Teacher here at Willard, and I have 4 amazing students with me. So, Kaylee, would you like to stand up? Sophia, I have Colin, and I have Michael. Would you like to come up with me? Awesome. So, we're just gonna model what it would look like in a morning meeting. And so, in the morning, I might have a worksheet of paper on their desk, and it might say, "Okay, so you're gonna write your name on it and bring it over to the morning meeting." And we're just gonna create a circle, and sit around in our circle. And so, for our greeting this morning, what we're gonna do, or this afternoon, this evening, that's a little confusing. We are going to crumple our papers up into snowballs. And we're just gonna have a really quick snowball fight, and throw right in the middle. And so, then I'll ask all the students in my class, normally I have 20 students, to just grab a paper and take a sneak peek that it's not yours. And in a large circle, we would stand up. So, I'm starting, and I have Michael, and I'm gonna say, "Good morning, Michael."
Good morning, Kaylee.
Morning, Michael. Good morning, Sophia. And so, I know Dr. Correa spoke about shares being opportunities for students to speak out. One of the other things we do in our classroom is we do sometimes activities at our shares, and especially in the beginning of the year, we have the opportunity to just get to know each other and just start to make connections. So, I'd like to have all of us stand, please. We're just gonna do a super quick activity called "The Warm Wind Blows", and I'm gonna start in the middle, and we're all standing in a circle. And normally, if there's 20 of us, it's big and active, but I'm gonna say "The Warm Wind Blows" for someone who plays soccer. And so, if you were someone who played soccer, you would move your spot in the circle. And that's my friend Colin, and he's gonna be in the middle. So, he's gonna say,
The warm wind blows for someone who is wearing glasses.
2 of us, 3 of us. And Sophia, do you wanna be in the middle?
The warm wind blows for someone who likes to play a lot of sports.
Kaylee from the middle.
The warm wind blows for someone who's wearing glasses.
Sophia's in the middle. How about this one? You think I may be like someone with a certain such a... Science. Ooh, there's a couple of us.
The warm wind blows for someone who likes to play a lot of sports.
Sports, love it. Awesome. So, this is just a really quick idea of something that we might do, and this is a great opportunity for students to start making connections with one another, getting the opportunity to see, is there anyone else in this class who feels the way that I do, who likes the same things that I do? And especially those first couple weeks of school, that's so important, building. We are gonna do for our activity, it's a game called "Kosiki", and I'm hoping I didn't warn my students on this, but you'll all join me in an Energizer afterwards. But we're gonna start with Kosiki. Does anyone wanna go out in the hallway? So, her job is to go out in the hallway, and we're gonna choose a student, and we're gonna sit down. Sophia's gonna start a move, and everybody's gonna... Kaylee, we're ready for you. Colin? And as you can imagine, with 20 students and walking around the circle, it is a little bit more challenging to figure out who. With only 5 of us, it is a little bit more challenging than it is a fun game in the morning. We do quite a few other games that are very similar, but can I have everyone stand up with me? Maybe everyone in the room stand up with me? Is that okay? So, sometimes we do, for our morning activity, we'll do like a game or something, but other times we do what's called an Energizer. And so, we're trying to get students, we're trying to get everyone excited to be here for the day, so that you guys know which one I'm doing. Are you guys ready? So, we have everyone start. You're gonna go almost all the way down to your feet. You're gonna say, "I'm awake, alert, alive, enthusiastic." Woo! Awake, alert, alive, enthusiastic. Woo! I'm awake, alert, alive. I'm alive, alert, awake. I'm awake, alert, alive, enthusiastic. Woo! Those are slow ones. I need to remember.
We appreciate the beginners.
So, that's just a quick Energizer that we might do one morning on Responsive Classroom. And we do have the opportunity to do that in between subjects, getting the kids up and moving throughout the day. And then the last part of our morning meeting is just the morning message, and so here's an example of my morning message. So, normally, I would have the kids say it in unison, and they'd look, you guys are picking it up? So, it says, "Good morning." Happy Wednesday. Today, we are thinking about our Willard Pride Goals and saying good morning to 3 new friends. So, that was our goal this morning, just say good morning to 3 new people, learn 3 new names, and so we had the opportunity to celebrate our Willard Pride together.
Wonderful job.
And that's what we had.
Kaylee, Colin, Michael, Sophia, will you take a bow for us? So, you kind of... You're talking about your mouth, are you?
Alright.
So, that was a little taste of morning meeting and what takes part in morning meeting. Last year, Brian offered the opportunity for teachers to go out and to become Responsive Classroom trained and train us back. So, last year during our welcome back, Kristen represented the intermediate grades, Dara Flum represented the primary, and the 3 of us during our opening staff meeting, we were able to share a lot of different things. And as you can imagine, Kristen had a ton of Energizers, and she had us up and going throughout our, throughout our meeting. During our staff meeting this week, you have to practice what you preach, and we did a few ourselves this week. We did a few activities, and we got to play a really cool one that hopefully teachers went back and could try with their students as well too. So, when we talk about something that we value here at Willard and we value in the Berlin Public Schools, the academics are certainly important, but the social and emotional wellbeing, the connections that we form with kids, and the responsibility we have as staff to make sure that every staff member, every student, and every person visiting the Berlin Public Schools and visiting Willard feels welcome. So, that is a little taste of our morning meeting, and we wanted to share something that we, we take a lot of pride in here at Willard. So, thank you for letting us present that to you.
Thank you very much for presenting it to us. That was great. For the students, you guys said you were nervous. It did show you guys were awesome. I heard the teacher say she was a little nervous too. Come on, we're not that scary. We're not scary at all, so thank you very much. Brian, I expect all of this to happen at Central Office. I'll be back tomorrow morning to see. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Brian, Linda wants to do it.
We'd say, I think we should start early in this.
I think it'd be great, Linda, if you had that.
I'll sign up for the first one. We'll play, we'll play the 3 guesses, the 5 guesses and 3 clues. That's what we did as a staff this week, so I gladly signed up for the first one.
Any comments from the Board at this point, or wanna move on? Alright. Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, we have committee reports and correspondence. Oh, we have cookies? There's cookies in the back, so please take them before you go, 'cause otherwise, we have to eat them while. And then absolutely, the students can go home and do their homework. Look, he's got no cookies. He's no cookies. Oh, okay, alright, alright, alright. No cookies, no cookies, no cookies. Rich, you have to eat a blind one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, we're gonna watch the lawyer.
That was great. So, next up, we have committee reports and correspondence to the Board. And the first item typically is the report from the student representative. Jen, I know that this is your first meeting, but I'm sure that you have had some conversations with Alex, so if you have something to present to us, that's great. And if you don't, because it's the beginning and first meeting, I understand that too, so I'll turn it over to you.
So, I can just...
Yep.
On August 27th, the high school held an orientation for incoming freshmen and new students. And in the cafeteria, there was a club and activity expo for new students to sign up. And there was a lot of kids who showed up, so it was good turnout. And then during the first week of school, class meetings were held for each grade. And Mrs. Eustace welcomed everyone, and the class advisors went over important announcements, including the freshman elections, which happened Wednesday, and color wars. And last Wednesday, up, excuse me, upbeat registration was also held. Over 300 students signed up for new upbeat houses this school year. And the first meeting was yesterday, also with a great turnout, and many students signed up for Berlin Fairships. Last Wednesday, the summer reading celebration was held in advisory. And this year, students were asked to record a book they read on a Google form, along with the summer learning experience, which had a positive response from the students. And for some sports, the girls' cross-country team repeated at the Wyndham Invitational Champions, and the boys play second on Saturday. Football won 41 to 0 against Buckley Friday, and the girls' soccer team won their first game 9 to 0 against Platt, also on Friday.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And how's the first year, how's the beginning of the school year going for you?
It's going well.
Excellent. Excellent. Correspondence to the Board?
Yes, I have one correspondence here. From the Board of Education and Staff. Thank you for the lovely flowers. Your kindness is greatly appreciated during this difficult time. Linda Rogers, whose mother passed away. She's a secretary at Griswold.
Excellent. I have one piece of correspondence that came from Dave Irwin. He thanked us profusely for the hourglass that we presented him, and it is not going to his interim assignment that he's working at right now. His wife said it's too special, and it's got a place of honor in his home. So, he was really thrilled to get it and loves what we presented him with, so I'll share that with you. At this point, is, I got to go to Eileen's open house at the high school. She did a great job. It was really, she did a really nice job welcoming everybody and putting your personality out there, which is great, I think. Everybody I talked to really thought highly of what you did. And then I got a chance to walk around and talk to some of the teachers, so it was, it was a nice, it was a nice evening. And then the next day, I came to actually this open house. So, they did a nice job welcoming the families. They were talking about knowing my first name. I was amazed that every single parent and student and they knew by name. So, a nice job for the opening of the school year. Any other correspondence or reports for Board members? We'll move on to audience of citizens. At this point, is there anybody here who would like to address the Board in any way? Jan, you look like you're it. Thinking, no? He's just listening. He's just listening. I know how that works. So, seeing no one wanting to address the Board, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like to add or remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Julia.
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? How many do we have? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Motion passes 6-0. And we are moving right along to New Business. Sorry, 2 different agendas, this one and the updated. Number, item A here is the monthly budget report.
I'd like to pass something out that was not in your packet, obviously. It would be a personal thing, and I'll explain that. This is a new format, so I wanted to explain what it is outside of the consent agenda. As I reported, this is our consent agenda. I'll leave that later. Okay. I'll leave a sign for you right there. A couple of comments on this. We've got a new, a new monthly report on the budget status that we're gonna be presenting from this point forward. Previously, you get the, you get the monthly report in its normal format out of our machines. Now, in the consent agenda, it talks about monthly expenditures by major category, encumbrages balances, etc. You receive that every month, and what you, it's not in this one, because I took it out, but you receive it all the time. People can continue to receive it. At the stretch, at the, excuse me, at the direction of the superintendent, we're not gonna be providing you a more expanded monthly report. We understand that the Board wants to know more about the budget as it goes through the year, and so we're gonna provide you a manual report that can, can help you work out with us on the budget. There's a few reasons for that. You all know when we put a budget together and project it, we do that over a 9-month period prior to when the budget starts. So, we do it from October to June. It's our budget, but it's a budget estimate. That's really what gets put together. And it's got major categories in it, and it's got backup line items, and it's got sub-line items, and it's got a huge amount of information in our big book, but remember, it's an estimate that's developed long before you go into the school year. You know, based upon the best information we have when we do that, is we provide what we think the costs are gonna be going forward. At the same time we're doing that, if you think about how a budget works, at the same time we're providing new, we're projecting a new budget, we are operating and closing out the existing budget. So, there's a lot of things moving around in our budgets during that period of time, and actually all through the year. We're talking about, you know, consolidation of line items, transfers, expenditures, a number of things. And so, if you think about how a budget works, it's a very living document, and it's moving. So, what we'd like to do is help you be along with us while we, while we do that. So, this new format, and it's not much on this report you've got in front of you now, but it is gonna expand that information, not only given to you at meetings, but also on the paper itself. Again, this is the Board's budget. So, you know, we wanna expand, we wanna basically, excuse me, expand the reporting, as I said, to give you a better picture, possibly, of expenditures and transfers. You know, you, we're developing both current and projected status of expenditures, but for example, I'll just read this. We're going to be increasing the number of sub-line items in our budgets in order to better control or project expenditures going forward. And that's for 2 reasons. The one for operating ourselves, but also for projecting for next year's budgets. So, we'll have a better review. So, there's gonna be more things in our budgets, line items, and you'll be reporting on those things, and the transfers that go along with them. We'll also be reporting periodically on if there's any line item surpluses, line item deficits, what we plan to do with it, what the priority expenditures may be going forward that we can get ready for during the year, and not necessarily wait till the end of the year, which we think is a board a much better picture, and gives the operation a much better picture. You know, and therefore, like I said, it reduces the unexpected year-end transfers. You've got the report there. The only thing that's different in this first report is you can see in the last column, these proposed transfers. So, what we'll be doing every month, this will be showing you what our proposed transfers are for the coming month. Then the next month, what you will see is these proposed transfers put into the general budget, revised into the general budget, and then we'll be reporting. revised into the general budget, and then we'll report from that point in time. You'll, you'll have the opportunity, obviously, to ask questions. You'll have the opportunity to ask what these are about. Like I said, there's nothing exciting right here, but there will be at certain times. And there will be times when the superintendent, or I'm most probably the chairman, or anybody else would want to discuss what these proposed transfers are. And so this will give us the opportunity to do that. These will be put in your normal consent agenda. So what will have to happen is if somebody reviews these, when you get it, if there's something you want to question, you pull it out, ask the questions. I stand up and do my song and dance, or somebody else. But, but that's really what this is all about. But I just want to let you know that's why it's on the consent agenda and what it'll be going for. Really all I have.
Thanks, Jeff.
No less is question, obviously.
Any questions? Yep, Tim?
Yeah, one, looking at the tuition, just a question on the current month and cumulative. How is the current month larger than the cumulative?
Let's see.
Started school in August.
Well, you know what, Mr. Oaks? That's got to be a mistake to report here, obviously. This comes out of the machine, so it's something that I unfortunately did not catch.
No, no, it's, it's okay. So if you look at transportation, right, you'll see the current month, but the cumulative expenditure is higher there also, Tim.
Well, the current month for transportation is zero.
Correct. Looking at, I'm sorry, look at utilities, I looked it online. So utilities?
Utilities, current month is forty-two dollars, which is fine. I would expect current month to be less than cumulative across the board.
So would I.
And cumulative probably should be whatever two thirty-four plus three seventy-six is in this, in this situation.
Or, or they're reversed. Might have been transposed, but I...
It might be.
I'm thinking maybe a big tuition payment at the beginning of the year, causing a big uptick, but...
I can check on that and certainly report back on any of these ideas.
Fair enough, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have a question just on, let me read it again, yes. I'm looking at the administrative salaries. It looks like we're projecting that we're a hundred and four thousand dollars short by the end of the year on administrative salaries. But we're only transferring in thirty-four thousand. What's the rationale to do a new piecemeal?
Well, first of all, the one-on-four is because we get reimbursed by the town on some of our administrative salaries. So we don't have that coming yet. So that'll be, that'll be taken care of in that, and, and there's one other thing here.
That position is Denise Parsons, our HR director, she's shared with the town. So we have full obligation until the town, at the end of the year, gives us the money. So we're balancing, thirty-four thousand we're balancing will put us at the correct number once the reimbursement is, to anticipate a zero there at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Jeff, I can tell you that I like this report. I know that we, when you sat on this side of the table, these were questions that we had. And typically, we didn't ask them until the end, when we got this one report in June. So I like the fact that we can kind of monitor as we go through, and we can ask questions as we go through. So I appreciate that, thank you.
In all honesty, what we'd like to have happen is, as we go through the years, like I said, periodically, we can, we can look at deficits, we can look at surpluses, we can also decide if there is going to be something that we want to make an initiative before the end of the year, and not have to wait till the end. I mean, it just, and very frankly, it's important for us to have the board of office. Because, I mean, like I said, it's your budget, and you're going to get to know what goes on, so it's good from all angles.
I like this part, Tim. I also see it as a tool for creating future budgets much, much easier. Well, easy is probably the wrong term, but with better understanding of what goes into each line.
Can you do something with this?
There is a motion to approve the monthly budget report.
What do you want, what do you want to do with the motion? Do you want to approve it with proposed revisions, or mathematical changes? I can send out another one, I can do whatever you'd like, but...
No, I think that we should wait on approval until the next meeting, make the correction. We can, we can act on it.
As long as that doesn't prevent you from cutting checks that need to be cut.
But the format, the format the board likes?
The format, yeah, the format is fine. I think we make the correction to the numbers. And at the next meeting, which I think is on the twenty-fourth, we can put a motion on there, too.
And Mrs. Chairman, I understand what you're doing, I'm also approving this report, is you're approving the proposed transfers, so we can go ahead and do the transfers.
So let's, let's make the correction, we can vote on it at the next meeting, and we'll go for it.
Very good.
Next item is new staff orientation, twenty-eighteen. I'd like to ask our assistant superintendent, Dr. Aaron Britt, to share a little about the new staff orientation. Aaron led the program for us this year. Aaron, you're up.
Hey, so we had our new teacher orientation for two days on August twenty-second and twenty-third. Brian told you a little bit about it when we did the back-to-school report. But it's really an important event during the school year. It not only gives us a chance to welcome new people into the district and have them get to know some of the staff, but it really gives an important opportunity to set the tone for what coming to Berlin is all about, what we're about as a district, and to start to share our values, and what we're hoping that they'll help us achieve for our students. We started with a time for Brian to come and introduce the central office staff, and for Matt to come and welcome the new teachers on behalf of the Board of Education. We had first up a chance for the beginning teachers to learn about something that was actually brand-new for the district. We gave them a sneak peek at the district instructional, the district improvement plan. They got a look at the district Berlin learner outcomes, and had a chance to talk right away about what that would mean for their work moving forward. We had a chance to look at professional learning and professional selling opportunities that we present across the year. So Carl Watson and Lori Jervin were there in their roles as capable curriculum directors to share some of the initiatives. So they got to learn about what we were doing for next-gen science standards, and what opportunities we have for people to come to Berlin and help them learn, as well as what other opportunities they would have to go out into other venues in Connecticut for professional learning. Something that was new this year, which was, I think, a really welcome addition, was that we had eight members of the Teacher Leadership Council. So Katie Ametta is leading a group of, so Katie knows that, former teacher of the year. She has organized a group of teacher leaders from across the district who've stepped up, who specifically want to serve a role in welcoming new people to our district. And this is in addition to the required state mentoring program. So it's very commendable for our Berlin staff to have teachers that are essentially giving up a day of their summer vacation to come in, welcome new teachers. They brought survival kits, so they gave them little mugs with little cutesy things in them. But new teachers love spag, like they thought that was fun. And the teacher leaders also pre-read the article that I had sent to the new teachers to read in preparation for the orientation, and then joined the new teachers for discussion. So we shared a text from Mark Brackett from Yale, from the Center for Emotional Intelligence. You might have seen him highlighted in the press a few weeks ago when he was the keynote speaker at the superintendent's back-to-school sessions. So in our precedents, we had picked an article that was directly aligned with the state initiative to become the first emotional intelligence state in our school systems, and chose something that the teachers could focus on and talk about with the teachers that came and joined. And certainly having an article to lead the discussion was a little bit more, it made it a little neater than just sitting around saying, "Well, come." They actually got to share some of the strategies and things they're doing in classrooms. The teacher leaders stayed and had lunch, which gave the new teachers a chance to talk to them in a more informal setting, which is also nice because they have a chance to do some sort of Q and A that they might not want to do in front of the whole group. And it was nice because there were teachers in the group that are brand-new, this is their first job ever, and teachers that are veteran teachers that are coming to join the staff. So, you know, they have different questions and different concerns, things that they want to know about. And I felt that the sort of flex back and forth between formal presentations and informal settings was, was nice for them. We followed that by having people come and talk about the technology system. So there's a lot of things for teachers to learn now between Power School and how to do attendance, grade books, and use the SchoolAggie platform, and use the Google Classrooms and the Google Setups. So we had people from our technology staff, as well as some of our district technology teacher leaders, to come and share work that's done, how they access the curriculum, and so on. And then we had two representatives from the BEA come and speak to the teachers at the end of the day about the union and what it means to be a member of the BEA. On the second day, we had upbeat come, so the upbeat students that did the presentation following last spring came and did a similar presentation to the new teachers to show some of the ways that students serve as leaders within the school and do outreach to the community. And we had all of the district administrators, the principals from all the buildings, come and introduce themselves. Everyone shared a little bit of something personal about themselves to make a connection with beginning teachers. They went off to their individual schools, and each of the individual buildings had a chance to talk through specific procedures and things that people would need to know, being new to their building. And then they came back and had lunch. And on the second day, we had teachers that were new teachers last year be invited to come back and do the kind of like, "I survived year one, Berlin's a great place to work," and do that sort of shoulder-to-shoulder, like, "I just didn't feel, I was new here last year, and things are great on that behalf." Linda Holian and Cindy Martin and Shaw Soisner from Special Services spoke about the whole range of pupil personnel services, talked about the special programs that are here from Blast to the Transition Academy, and gave staff members, new staff members, a chance to see what that whole G.I. Services looks like. And finally, Nicole Dariada and Denise did a HR presentation to make sure that staff members are familiar with all of their benefits and have a chance to do not only sort of the presentation, but have individual questions answered. So overall, it was a very positive day. The teachers also had an opportunity to get professional texts and some books to take after their classrooms. So some of them left with a whole armful of things and were like sent on their way, but happy to be here and part of the Berlin system.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? I think we had, the opening day was fourteen of the seventeen, I think.
We have fourteen of the seventeen.
Fourteen of the seventeen.
People that had not yet been hired. Just did the training Wednesday and Thursday, and Thursday I left to contribute people so that we could hire people. And the last person was hired, I think, on Friday.
Super great group of folks, really enthusiastic and ready to go. So it was nice to meet them, and...
There's nothing like the teacher energy.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said that morning, it's my second favorite day of the year, because the first favorite is opening day of school, when you get to see the kids. Unfortunately, I missed that this year. But thank you very much, I think that you did a great job, and we're excited to see what the new teachers bring. Next up, we have facilities updates, summer maintenance, project updates, things of that nature.
Very quickly, as I said, summer consent report of last month. First of all, we're obviously doing security improvements. The town has a project to put in vestibules. We're having vestibules put in for four of our schools. The manufactured parts and designed parts of those, of those vestibule facilities are not complete yet. We are told this week that the design will be completed by, before by the town. The town's design will be completed in a couple of weeks. The pieces of it manufactured, they should be here within a ten-week period. After that, we'll start putting a, putting a schedule together for actually doing the improvements. The town will be putting together the schedule. We anticipate clearly getting it done as quickly as we can nationally. We do believe, at least in speaking with the superintendent, that we're hoping to get at least one or two of the vestibules done during the school year without too much interruption, and then most probably done by the end of the year. But we don't have the schedules yet, and I will report to you as best I can. And again, it's not only a matter of building them, it's a matter of building them at a time when the schools are operating. So it's a little more difficult than we had initially anticipated. But we're, there are great improvements, they're going to be good. We've gone over all the fine design and stuff, and I think everybody will be very pleased when they see them and see them operate. We've also done some force shooting on all the windows, on bottom floors in all the schools, and things to do with our security program. Last thing on security, we have a Raptor program. I don't remember how much we recorded on that last time, but this is a software program we're going to be using for visitors to the schools, and also volunteers to the schools to do, to check out, first of all, who they are. They'll come in, everybody will come in now, it'll be a protocol put together that the board will get to see as soon as it's completed. But everybody that comes into the schools will be, have their license taken, will be put into a Raptor machine. What will come out of that is a number of things. One will be a badge that has your picture on it, has your name on it, and also where you're going to school, and what I want you to read, that kind of stuff. So everybody is identified to who they are, visitors and so on and so forth. We will be explaining all this to the parents, explaining all this to the people that come in and out of our schools as we go forward, and there'll be a particular protocol that'll be used. It's a, it's a great idea, it's being done by a number of schools, certainly around New England, coupled in Connecticut at this point, including Newtown uses this facility, so this operation. We're hoping to get it going by October one. That's what we're shooting for, everything seems to be going well there. So that, those are our security issues. On top of that, just some things that I think would be of interest that have happened through the summer and coming into fall. McGee is finally getting the rug, the auditorium. If you've been in there lately, it's been ripped up for a while, and not very nice, and doesn't match, and all kinds of stuff like that. Well, that's being taken care of. And I came in there the other day, and we're putting it down, so I'm pretty pleased about that. That's one of our major showpieces for the town, for uses an auditorium, especially before the high school. Willard Library improvements. There's a number of things that are going to go on here. This stuff is new right here, but there's also furniture coming in here, which will be here in a while, and that will bring this up to what a good library media ought to have for a facility of this size. There's other various FFD stuff that are going on in schools. And on top of that, we've got, you know, the normal facility department maintenance and custodial maintenance that gets done in all the schools, that happens every summer, HVAC and things of that nature. So I, I think there was a lot done this year. Unfortunately, what I got to see this year is that, you know, you plan on doing a lot of things in the summer, but the summer's only, you know, eight weeks, nine weeks, and so it's always a crunch. And these guys will get tails off doing it. So glad to report that I think the schools are obviously ready, they're open. And I think the improvements that we planned have got done, and are going forward. I would be very acceptable, good work.
Thank you, Jeff. I have a couple of, I guess, comments slash questions as we go along here relative to facilities. So the first is the vestibules. And I appreciate the report, and actually, I don't think there's anything to come back with. It's more of a statement of the fact that I think, as a board, we expected the vestibules to be done for the opening of school. And now we're hearing that materials aren't even ordered, plans aren't finalized. And we understand that that's on the town side, the school board, the school system and the board does not manage that. So it's disappointing.
And just to confirm a little, you said that part of the build was ten weeks? Just making sure that you didn't mean ten days.
No, no, no. What happens with these kind of projects is you design them, okay, after the money's put in place, and after, you know, you've designed them, you go out to bid for them, you get a contractor in to do it, then the contractor goes and puts together the actual job specs and the real design of what's happening day by day. That's what gets done. And then those get sent to the fabricator, and you get in a queue. And what I'm told this time of year, because of all the safety things going on, that queue is very, very long.
So what brought up my concern as I went back and looked is, I think we voted on this in March. So the delay for me is, is an issue. I know that, Brian, you've had conversations with the folks at the town, and, and, you know, I'm not looking for explanations, but I think that we as a board probably need to express our concern and frankly dissatisfaction with the fact that it's just delayed with no recourse, just, we didn't get to it yet.
I think the first issue was the grant pay delay. The second issue was additional funding that had to come from the town council. But the meeting that took place in June, that I was part of, prior to Jeff coming on board, we were told nine weeks lead time by the contractor. I was at the table when that was discussed. And the concern was that the contractor, just a recent meeting that I was asked to go upstairs to, you know, five minutes before it took place, with the contractor, the architect, the town manager, Doug Solak, is that the contractor believes that these drawings are going to be done overnight. And the drawings, to this point, three of the schools are complete. The fourth school, Willard, is a little more complicated. That one, I think, is going to be supposedly complete tomorrow. So because the drawings weren't complete, they couldn't go out to production. But at that first meeting in June, the contractor stated that there would be nine weeks lead time, eight to nine weeks lead time for the actual materials, which meant that it should take place end of summer or right now. My request to the town was that, even if they have to create alternative entrances or temporary offices, that we'd like to see the... that we'd like to see the buildings being done in an expeditious fashion. Because that's what, from the public forum, that's the opinion of the public. And that was presumptuous. So I have a meeting with the town on it, I have Jeff's meeting with the town on it. At this point, you know, they're saying if it takes ten weeks minimum to get the actual, you know, aluminum and glass that needs to get constructed. And it's constructed in ArmorTech, I learned out of Texas. It's one of three companies in the US that's producing this product. And if it takes ten weeks, well, now we're near, you know, December.
December first.
Right, so now we have winter months with having temporary entrances will be difficult. So we're looking spring, summer. I've asked that if we could do one building in particular, that it's Willard, because we do run summer school out of Willard. And it would be important to have that building functional for the summer. So I think at this point realistically, Jeff, you may differ, that I think the best we're going to see is Willard being complete before summer. That's just my own prediction based on the few because I've been to the conversations. You know, there were some issues with the fire marshal as well as building inspector for temporary entrances. I recently was told by the town manager that that could take place, that they could do an alternative entrance. But then there's some cost in relocating the secretaries and all the various systems and so on during that time. And the expense of, you know, plywood-ing things up and still having it, still having that area accessible during the day. So I think that's where we are. That's why I just, my own feeling is that it's important for the public to know that this is not something that we're, that, you know, I'm in control of or Jeff's in control of, or even the board's in control of. The town hires the contractor, the town sets the bid, the town decides on the architect. Those are all decisions that were made, you know, without, without really our input on that. And I've had that conversation with the town manager and I just think it's important for, because I had to receive phone calls and emails weekly about why the vestibules haven't been started and why aren't there more safety initiatives being done if, at the forum you said this was going to take place, so.
I have a question. But I actually have two-part questions. So if we're doing vestibules while school is in session, my first question is, how many contractors, subcontractors are we exposing our children to and does their background check that we do want to use?
We would, we would use the Raptor system to do a background check.
And then how exposed does it leave the school?
Well, that's how we, that's how we have the fire marshal and the building inspector. You know, anytime you do a construction project, when something's in session, there is dust, there is, you know, there is death to that.
And how long is the, how long is the process that they expect it to take?
Well, they said they handle the material, they thought they could wrap it up in a three to four weeks top session, so that...
So eight to 10.
Yeah, well, they said three to four tops, but that's, you know, that's what the discussion was. So, you know, the other option is, as initially was proposed by the town was to have all of them taking place in the summer. And as you know, sometimes those, everything doesn't get completed even in the summer. So I just think if you lock up all four schools' entrances, the summer school needing to take place, other than the high school, it could be very difficult.
I think my biggest, this is more me as a parent, because I have a fifth grader here, is the, probably the amount of people. As a parent, I would want to know how many contractors we're expecting, what kind of, what time of the day are they going to be here at the beginning of school? And, I mean, are they here all the time? I just, it makes, and I'm not even talking about necessarily the, I mean, I know why we're putting the vestibules in, but I'm thinking of just predators in general, kind of, you know, this is what my thought process is when I'm, as a parent, as I'm thinking of this, that... And like, I know you said the Raptor system, that we'll do a background check, but...
But what about like with the doors being open? Will it be easier for people to get in there?
Yeah, that's what I worry about, with construction.
And you have that, but who's, who else is, can you sneak in? Can you come on in through the, you know what I mean?
And not just, not, not saying that necessarily for the main safety thing, but you have friends of, you know, it just, I feel like it exposes that we're exposed in a way that makes me a little nervous, if that makes sense.
Well, the initial discussion, and I can only share what was shared initially, was that there would be a partition wall, almost like if you took a hallway and that wall would be there where you, there wouldn't be access to the building. There'd be only access to the front office and outside. And then there'd be a temporary entrance, which would have our Raptor system. And would have the off temporary office. And that's for anyone coming into the actual building, other than the construction zone, which wouldn't have direct access to the building. It would just be outside.
That makes me feel better. So as long as the kids aren't having direct contact with these contractors.
No, they would, you would have a temporary wall that would divide a hallway.
Language and jokes.
It would have to be totally, it'd have to be totally closed off.
I think so, while we're going through the high schools.
It'd have to be, because, but...
Just, if I may, there's normally, when you do these kind of things, when you're doing construction in occupied, occupied school, there's a whole logistic thing that has to be approved, should be approved. On all of answering those questions and what happens. And I'm very frankly, I'm sure that the administration would be very interested in what happens just to play this, to make sure that things are as they should be. But there are, there is always one in an eye.
Thank you, Brian. It makes me feel better, I just...
No, that was a good question.
Brian, can I ask some questions on the same, same measurement?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Fast forward to the end of this, when the vestibules are done. Are we confident that we have the personnel that are needed to be able to? Because their jobs are going to be changed. There's going to be new things that they're going to have to do, they're going to have to retrain. Is it, are there going to be personnel issues or simply retraining the people that we already have to demand this new system?
The hope is that it's not cumbersome and that's why we purchased the Raptor system. Because it is, you know, we looked at three different systems, it seemed the most user-friendly. And we knew that there would be, you know, clerical help that typically would be the frontline, you know, taking in, so on. You know, if we're fortunate enough and, you know, to hire security at each building, it's definitely something that they could do in the front too. So I, I don't think it's going to be any more than what we currently have. You take the license, hold the license, sign in, give the license back. Now we're going to take the license, go through a card reader, does the, does the background check, prints off an ID. The ID goes on the individual. So I think it's even less cumbersome than what we have now. And the visitors, right now for volunteers, it's a paper form they complete, a background check has to be done. Then we get the paper background check back. With the new system, they're going to complete an online form. It's going to be a background check and then the name comes back. And we already know, they'll have a list district-wide of people that are approved, volunteers for the district. So it does, you know, I think we're streamlining things as far as time for people. That's the hope. I can't tell you until we start working.
My next question, I'm not sure it's a question, but revolves around the high school. So I mentioned earlier that I was at the high school open house, which fell smack dab in the middle of the heat wave. And in conversation with some of our teachers, they expressed, I guess the word is concern, that some of the areas of the high school were still really warm, even though we have a brand-new high school with a brand-new heating and cooling system, that it wasn't keeping, keeping up. Any truth to that over there, Jeff?
Yesterday at the update meeting, the cafeteria was pretty warm. So they said that there was something with like the communication system up there, but I don't know.
So this, this leads me to a series of questions, right? So I heard through multiple sources that the heating and cooling unit that's on the roof is actually undersized for what we need. I thought that was an interesting comment. I don't know where we are with the ductwork wrapping. I've heard we need it, we don't need it, we need it, we don't need it. We still have, my understanding, we still have some roof leaks that, on really major delages, we have leaks in the building. And it sounds like we're still being stonewalled by the building commission as to they say it's done and we say it's not. And I just want to make sure that we take the position that we're not approving this project until we're 100% satisfied that all these things that are now seem to be hanging out there are addressed. I'm not, I'm not necessarily looking for any responses back, I'm just kind of expressing my personal opinion. And please, any other board members that feel just as strongly, jump in because the, the town made an investment on, on that building and it's beautiful. But if there's issues, we need to resolve them sooner, not later, and not kick it down the road where it's just somebody else's problem. It's, it's the town's problem right now. And I'm concerned about, to hear teachers talk about the, the cooling system while they're sitting in class, the evaporation is dropping down on students' heads while they're sitting in the classroom. You know, things of that nature is, is a concern to me.
That would be condensation. We need to get you back inside.
Condensation, evaporation. Thank you for the, for the correction, Mr. Oaks. But, so, I mean, I welcome any other comment here, but I just need to make sure that we are united and we make sure that we go forward with. These things need to be taken care of.
Completely. I was actually stopped in Stop &amp; Shop on a Saturday night around 10 o'clock.
You shouldn't go there.
I know, I usually go to Whole Foods, but it was a quick trip. And two parents with kids at the high school stopped me and they said, "Did you hear that the AC unit is wrong size for the high school?" And I said, "No, this is the first I'm hearing about it." But I knew that we would have some time to talk about it because I don't have a meeting. But I was surprised about that and all I could think about was, well, we have this brand-new school and we have these people with, who are experts putting all this in. And I know I was not on the board when the project was proposed and approved and started. But I think as a board, we need to do our due diligence to make sure wherever this issue is, we, we address it.
And it's important that we point out that the board doesn't, didn't manage or doesn't manage the project. That's managed by the town of Berlin. We simply at the end are the group that signs off on the completion of it so that it can be closed at some point. And we are not in a position to sign off on that, so.
I can't say, like, I've had recently sit down with the chairman of the public building. Just basically to find out directly from him where he thinks we are and what the situation is. He is very, very well aware of what these concerns are, okay? He was very knowledgeable about the project and very knowledgeable about the circumstances. And very knowledgeable about the fact that the, that the position of Board Ed was not to accept until they're ready to accept. So that's not a surprise. Some of these things unfortunately end up in what says, and I'll just relay very nicely what he said, is that they fill back the budget issues because there are some suits that you might have read about against the town relative to contractors and so on and so forth. Or the town going after the contractors and so on and so forth. And so there's some claims. So whenever you have claims on a construction budget, rather than use the rest of the money to spend on the things that you want to do... Oh, no, but just think about it as an overall budget, okay? In order for them to recommit what we could say is contingency to do something like we'd like to do, and I think they'd like to do that, I hope, is they're not doing that at this point and police claims are set. So that's why things are in.
Linda.
That's the way I understand it. And I'm not speaking on his behalf, I'm just letting you know that's the conversation that he had with us. So, so I don't think the stuff that you're talking about is being overlooked at all, it's not the impression I get. There are some comments that were made on, some of the stuff could be maintenance, some of the stuff could be the sizing of some of the stuff that was put in, the type of equipment it is. It's a very complicated issue. Doesn't mean what the board's concerned about isn't very, very important. But I didn't get the impression that the, at least the chairman was standing there saying, "This is what we're doing. We don't care what the Board Ed is doing," so on and so forth. That's, that's not the impression I have. So I just wanted to relay that because I think it's, I think he was earnest.
Jeff, does the PBC, did they have a punch list of all the items that were, that are being discussed? I mean, as far as air handling in cafeteria, specific classrooms, leaks in specific areas, do they have a list?
I have not, I don't know, I have not, I'm sure they, I'm sure they do from a construction standpoint. I have not asked for that from the Board Ed, I certainly can't. I am assuming with their program manager stuff that they've got all the punch lists and all the complaints, they're available, and what they could do about them. But again, I'm not that kind of a reporter, I'm not sat at the table with them, listening, deliberating at all. But clearly, is, like I said, you know, inform me with the chairman as well, or he was well aware of these things. And well aware that it was an item and a weight of the budget, but, you know, good question.
Brian, you look, you're itching to say, there's, there's implications for this, for the high school not being completed. As you, as you know, the security grant that is funding majority of the vestibules, as well as, I think they're called pylons, those poles in front of McGee. Those are all funded through a security grant through the state and federal government. And I think it's federal also, but the high school not being completed means that the high school is not eligible for any of the grant funds because it's still an open construction project. So as you know about the film being put on all four of the other schools, that film is not on the high school. Nor will it be funded till the grant, nor can we even apply to it for the grant until the high school job is completed because it's an open construction. It's still an open construction item. So, you know, we also don't have those pylons in front of the high school, we have all that glass. Yet at McGee in front of the glass, we do have the pylons. And those are just things that I'm saying to the board to consider, not to say we should close the construction project, but those are things that I believe are still necessary at the high school. Yes, it's a new building, but to have the film on all the elementary schools and not having it on the high school, when the high school's on blast in front, I think is a concern. To have the ability to drive right into the building and, and, you know, not that I'm saying I, I want that to happen, but there is, there's nothing there. We spoke of at one point, you know, whether it's the pylons or it's like those big red balls you see at Target, you know, something there where it prevents an automobile or nothing being driven into the building.
Would the film protect a car from going through?
No, the film, the film is ballistically rated. It's not, it's not a, it's not bulletproof, but it does, you know, it acts as a, that's a turn, it slows the speed down. You know, there's some protection with it, but it's not, it's not putting, you know, ballistically rated glass in.
So what's a pylon?
The pylons are those, they're posts that go into down to the ground four or five feet. So that would protect, you know, if a vehicle was to try to ram into the building. You know, but I just think it's important to note that, that as, you know, things stay out there, not complete, we lose eligibility for things. And things that are at other buildings, safety projects that are being done on a building, are unable to be done unless they're fully funded by us.
Brian?
Yes?
What constitutes the open construction? I mean, to me, the, the school is fully occupied without daily construction.
The last, despite the PBC having control of the building project of the town, until the board accepts it as complete, you know, and they'll say, you know, the superintendent accepts it as complete, you know, that's what the construction manager said, we read that meeting, then, then the job is still open.
Did you say it's complete along with a punch list of items?
I don't think you can say that until the, until the, it's totally, I mean, you might know more, Jeff, than me.
Well, again, there's a particular time when the board will have to accept this, you know, facility. You can, my guess is you can accept the facility with some punch list items to be done or with some further improvements to be done if you so wanted to, okay? I believe that that's the way it was written on that. On the other hand, if you have taken a position as you have that you're not going to accept the school until all the things that you want are completed and funded. Because that was the issue earlier on, that the funds were left for, to take care of the things that had to be done. You don't accept, then you're in the same position of not being accepted. So, but that's, you're right, because you're talking about a strategy here.
But that's the risk of accepting with a punch list. Could the, could the builder reject that if he thinks the punch list is too extravagant?
No, 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 that doesn't go along with the contract, the construction contract acceptance by the board. What goes along with the contract is substantial completion and all the other, you know, warranties and things you need. That's, that's not the same, same issue. Contract is still in on what. The thing is, you could maybe, you could maybe, you know, if you could get comfortable with the fact of a commitment from the, from the, this is in my opinion, from the Public Building Committee, that these things will be completed and there will be funds for these things. Set aside, then you can accept the bill.
Which seems reasonable.
My concern...
That's the, getting people to agree.
My, my concern in this discussion is that a new roof should not leak. So we shouldn't be talking about this being something that the board wants. It's something that, in my opinion, we've already paid for. It's no different to me than you buy a brand-new car and a week later, the muffler falls off. You know what? That's not what I bought. And it should be taken care of without question. The concept of putting in ductwork instead of having it inside the building, moving it to outside the building with a change order because there wasn't room inside, okay, I understand that that's a...
because there wasn't room inside, okay, I understand that that's a change order, but that's a construction change, and now it needs to be addressed appropriately. We've had enough experience in this district of going through with duct work that leaks, air quality issues. We have the former principal here and the mayor at the time that had to suffer through that, that experience at the middle school. And now we're talking about duct work that leaks. It's gonna get, you're gonna have moisture inside of it. That leads to mold. That leads to air quality issues, and we're right out of the gate. To me, that's not, oh, I wish I had, or I'd like to add something to the school. That's, this, you know, I bought a house that should have a heating system in it. So for me, there's a difference between, you know, we're not asking him to take the money and put an artificial turf field in the middle field by the track. Is, we're asking him to make sure that the stuff that we've already have is proper. And that's my gripe. That's my gripe. And I'm talking to the, I realize I'm preaching to the choir here, right? So, but I know if anybody's gonna bring our message appropriate, it will be you. So.
It's gotta work business-wise. It's gotta work budget-wise, or it's gotta be more money. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things.
Understood. But some of these things, I mean, the big three things I just talked about are big things, right? So the duct work, the, if it truly is an undersized air handling unit on the roof and a leaking roof, all those things are big things. So, you know, I'm not asking that to have the classroom repainted. I mean, we're talking about basic mechanicals in the building, so.
So what's our next move on this? I mean, I mean, you know, I'm uncomfortable with, you know, someone at a supermarket said this, and we think this, and we think he's understanding. I mean, how do we solidify exactly what is understood? What are the options? What is the timeframe? What is it gonna cost? I mean, I think we just need to really understand in a more formal way what are our options, what are the timeframe for each one of these things? And whether or not they're real or not. I mean, I haven't, you know, seen anything in terms of the size of the air conditioning, whether or not this is rumor or truth. We need to get somewhere where this is all written down, we can go down and speak to them.
Right. I think that that speaks to... What has to happen is there has to be, you know, something formally drafted to the Public Building Commission, asking those questions, ask for something back, those statements. I think one of the issues when you get into the air handling unit, is it undersized or not? There's specifications that went out with this contract. And I can state only from a general sense that when you value engineer something, and this was value engineered several times to get to that place. My understanding is that the building was built so that the air temperature outside would be 85. Am I correct?
I don't know the exact...
It's something around there. So they're gonna, what could be said, I'm gonna say that, what could be said is, well, if the temperature's 95, we only engineered the system to work at 85, so therefore, it's not gonna work. So you're a bigger unit. You're right, you do need a bigger unit at 95, but we only engineered, I'm just saying, it's been happy the case. So that's, those are the things. So as with the duct work, what I've heard, and it's not been firsthand from the PVC, is that you have to have a certain R-value. And so the duct work that they put on does meet specs right now, even though it potentially could leak, it meets the specs. So there's differing opinions of whether it needs to be wrapped or not wrapped because it meets the specs this time. So, you know, one can look at it and say, the paint they put on the ceiling is already peeling off, so is this... But, you know, the questions are, to me, I was told it always goes back to the specs, and is what's currently there? The roof leaking, I think, is a tough spec, you're supposed to, but some of the other pieces, it goes back to the specifications that the original contract was under and the design, you know, of it. So the condensation on, we have what's called a chilled beam system at the, at the high school, so it's actually beams. Jeff, you might know more else than I do. But the chilled beams go through, and what happens when you get this humid air on cool beams, that's where you get the humidity, and then you get the condensation dropping. And you can only chill the beams so much to get the cool, to get that, to get the temperature in the room. So that's where we're having issues when it's drastically humid and hot. But we had issues with the full system not working, the mechanical side, there was, you know, not enough cooler or valve was open. And there were some, you know, the whole system wasn't functioning Jake. So we've had ongoing issues with it, you know. Now, when it's complete, will it function?
So I guess, you know, how do we get to the next step? So, I mean, you bring up some, like, scenarios, and I don't think the board has those... So for instance, if a representative was to, it is sized to a certain extent, and if it's 95 and humid outside, it's not gonna be that, it's gonna be a little bit warmer. I don't think we're to the point where we actually fully understand that. At that point, we have that information, we could say, okay, we're willing to accept it. We understand it was value engineered. We understand we're going to a certain budget, and it's not 95 and humid most of the time during the school year. But before, I think, we have all that in front of us, I don't think we're in a position to say yes or no, we're gonna accept these things.
So I think the next step is probably exactly what just someone just mentioned, and that's a correspondence to the PVC requesting an explanation and a status update relative to what we would call our punch list that we're aware of. I mean, I'm sure there's plenty of items that we don't have any idea.
Coupled with what they have as a current punch list.
Right. So I think that that's a, that's probably a logical next step, and that will fall on us to put that together and circulate through. So I think that that's, is that ERC? Is this called ERC?
Well, is it us as a board, or is it the board as the office? Is it the Royal Board or the Colonial Board? I don't know.
I think we could start at the ERC and just move it from there. Okay, my last thing with, with the building is my understanding is that the track got resurfaced. Is that true?
Yes, that is true.
All right. I'm ending on a good note. I'm ending on a good note. So I understand that the lanes still need to be painted, but the track has been resurfaced, so that's awesome. Look forward to seeing that at some point. So I appreciate the report. I appreciate the communication back with us. And I feel like we've been talking about this forever.
Ever. Thanks for bringing all that up now.
I think Jenna was in kindergarten when we started talking.
Yes. Sorry, Jenna. But you're there for two more, two years, so.
Yes.
Next up, we have the Berlin learner outcomes. Looks like Mr. Benigni has the lead on this one.
So over a year ago, we gathered administrators, teachers throughout the district at all levels, and started to talk about what do we believe in for the Berlin Public Schools? You know, is it just test scores? What are the foundational pieces that we want students to have when they leave the Berlin Public Schools to be successful? And through this four days of meeting and really brainstorming, we kind of brought that focus into five learner outcomes for the Berlin Public Schools. And they're outcomes that regardless of what grade level, they have relevance and meaning. And we used the work with habits of mind, which I know we had presentations on, we shared with the parent group as well as with the board. That's kind of the underpinning of these learner outcomes. And so one of the discussions with the group was, how do we message this out to the greater community? How do we share, other than just a piece of paper, what the outcomes listed? So staff members, Viva Plant, who's the high school AV coordinator and IT person, Jen Nero, Jean Marie Yogi, who was our teacher at McGee who recently moved to Virginia, and Kathy Miller at the high school, as well as a multitude of students. We sat and storyboarded the five learner outcomes. This is a very short seven-minute video of stop animation. And I encourage you to just look up stop animation in Google, like, or Target or something. The quality that we got doing this in gymnasiums and the media center, I think, is outstanding. The small screen looked just justice. That convocation had a large screen. It looked fantastic. I think it's just a great representation of learner outcomes, and I think it's a really unique way of doing it. So if we could just hit the lights maybe a little bit to show it, and it's only seven minutes.
Told you you'd wanna go.
I'm gonna fall asleep here.
These comfy chairs, hello. Turn the volume up.
I loaded the volume. I think stuff I wanna.
As a result of K-12 learning experiences and ongoing reflection, students will become increasingly capable of making effective decisions, solving meaningful problems, and influencing positive change in their lives and the lives of others. Kind, compassionate citizens listen, understand, and act with both empathy and respect, knowing what they do affects others. Mindful and responsive collaborators contribute ideas and listen to others' perspective to consider courses of action to accomplish a shared goal. Effective communicators share information, ideas, points of view, and/or feelings in a clear, precise, thoughtful manner appropriate for audience and nerves. Resilient and discerning problem solvers investigate a question, explanation, or challenge by developing an informed, questionable plan of action to construct solutions or offer conclusions. Innovative, imaginative designers develop, test, and refine ideas by experimenting with techniques and tools to reach a desired outcome.
It was really well done.
That was really great.
So I just think it's great within a message. It has students messaging it. It's in a, you know, what you consider stop animation is used by the media, today's media, a lot to message things. So, but I think more than the message, it's the outcomes of what they could be for the district when the curriculum is aligned to those outcomes. And we started to look at the curriculum and say, where within the curriculum are we ensuring that students are reaching those outcomes? And what really prompted the discussion was the capstone, because each administrator meets with the student, with four or five students, and goes over their capstone, reviews their presentation. And watching students present, we really felt that there were pieces that we thought students had that weren't present, were not present consistently. Hence, what are the outcomes that we want, and where should they be throughout their K-12 experience in Berlin? So that we do see the finished product, we know those outcomes are there. And with that, if I could, I want to turn over to the second part here, the logo, because I obviously shared this with Aaron. And then we had a discussion while Aaron started putting together a district approval plan. And looking at the continuous approval plan, looking at pieces that we already had in place, looking at learner outcomes, and then starting to look at, what are we currently doing as a district, and what do we need to do? And then beginning to start to get, trying to look at building facing continuous approval plans. And so Aaron said, what do you think of, and you'll see, and I know Matt, you have it there, the new logo, which is the same logo, just changing the statement across the bottom. So instead of committed to continuous improvement, it would say, purpose, passion, and pride. Instead of committed to continuous improvement. It's kind of, you know, we've had that statement, and I know we still are committed to continuous improvement. And that's why we have our continuous approval plans, right? But the statement would be purpose, like, you know, there's a purpose in why we do what we do. There's a passion in why we do what we do, and there's pride in what we do. And I think that, you know, as representative of Berlin, and many of you on the board as well as the teachers here, what we want students to take away, right? We want them to have purpose, we want them to have passion, and pride in everything that you do. So you please do that, anything you'd like.
So when we were putting together, I worked with Brian with the administrative team over the two days of the administrative council retreat that worked on the December school change, and then... school change, and then another day back in district. And we took the areas that the administrators wanted to work on across the upcoming school year, and generated three broad district goals, which number one, wanted us to create and commit to, and build a shared understanding of the Berlin learner outcomes. Because we want that to be the thread that goes through the whole organization of K-12. All of the teachers have to understand that, the parent community needs to understand that, what we're doing, and we need to be able to show in the curriculum and the opportunities that we're providing for students, how we're creating those opportunities for that to happen. We set a second goal around cultivating the learning culture for all of our teachers and for all of the students in the district, because if you don't have a thriving learning culture, you're not going to grow as a district. And third, we really don't need to capitalize on building strong community partnerships, working out teams that present for students, and doing things like internships and job related activities in the community, but also using people from the community to be able to mentor our students and help them learn and grow areas of expertise that we might not have within our school system. And further, we want to capitalize on creating a sense of pride in the Berlin public schools that we think will be positive for the whole district moving forward, and, to be frank, in some ways translates to more support for budget processes moving forward, if people feel priceless of what's happening in the schools, and want to support it, and trying to make sure those opportunities continue. So, we put the goals together, and the goals are important goals, but they don't really grab you in terms of, like, having something to remember them. And when we talked further, we identified the focus on the Berlin learner outcomes as the purpose, and that's what we're about, that's what we're trying to accomplish as a school district. The passion in terms of capturing the learning that we want to have in more staff members and our students, and we feel like tapping into the passion of our students for learning, and increasing teacher passion, tapping into teachers. That passion piece is really something that, there's many ways for us to connect to in terms of moving forward, and we felt that the pride piece really taps into the community relationships and how people feel about the school. So, we're certainly not anti-continuous improvement, but we feel like when we put that together into a continuous improvement plan, the purpose, passion, pride is something that I feel like resonates more. And as we started to share that out in a draft form with the administration folks, and then with teachers accommodation, I think teachers come up to us and say, I love that, that's exciting, but they want teachers.
It resonates.
So, it's not to take away from anything that existed previously, but it feels like another way to capture what we want to do in the district.
Thoughts?
I think that sounds fantastic. I like that.
I love it a lot.
Love it, love it. Much improved. I mean, continuous improvement, I mean, that's something that is and should be a given. You know, I mean, it's kind of, you know, 1980s sort of factors, you know, I mean, it's a given, that's how we live now. We always want to improve, but I think this really distills what's unique, I think that's excellent.
And I agree with you, Jake, and I think if we are committed to continuous improvement, that it makes sense to improve this right here by changing those words. But what I really love is how the purpose, passion, and pride, each one is related to your three goals. So, there's purpose in the, in the goals and in the statement. So, it's very intentional, I love it.
From a graphic perspective, pulling it out of the bite of the apple, is that deliberate? To make it bigger?
No.
Or there be an iteration that puts it in there as well?
We would put it inside the apple.
We've done that in graphic design.
No, we didn't have anyone to tweak it yet.
This is done internally with our tech staff that we have.
Gotcha.
We have external support to make it.
All right.
You have to play with it around in terms of the resolution and the size of the letters to think about putting it on the website and putting it on things moving forward.
We would keep it in the byte temp.
You need Microsoft Paint or something for that, I get it.
So, we have your support.
I like the change, and I also point out that committed to continuous improvement remains in our mission statement model, whatever it is that it says in our handbook, so that still remains intact. So, we're not taking anything from our tradition or past, we're simply enhancing it, and I really like that.
But I think if you think about, to be committed to continuous improvement, or to improve, right, you're gonna have a purpose, you're gonna have passion, you're gonna have pride.
Absolutely, I think they all tie together.
It's more the mission, you know?
Absolutely. Do we have to take action on this, or are we just run with it?
I don't see an action.
I don't see an action, so.
They're gonna take action.
No, I didn't write an action, so.
I think so, we've got a final problem.
But we just want to change it.
Do you, just to...
If we said no, you gotta change that whole video.
Just simply dials out the kid here, do you think there would be any pushback from anyone on this?
Oh, come on.
I just like to have.
Why?
Well, because there's that thing we've all sat around the table and said, this looks great, and then surprised, there's a lot of pushbacks. I just wanted to put that out there. There's no pushback on my end, I love it, but.
I think that working towards improvement is what we're supposed to be doing, and I think that they've done that with, with this design. Anybody else have any?
We have to see the plan. There's actually a plan behind the house, it's not just one piece of it.
Even better, even better. Any other questions regarding the video? They did a fantastic job with the video, you know, how do we, how do we use this and get it out there, right? I'm hoping it's posted on the website.
We're gonna market the heck out of that video, it's got a...
How do we get that out there?
Cave caps, caps, whoever we can get recognition from, attributions to the students, if possible, if that doesn't FERPA violate or anything like that.
So, I have the newsletter set to go, the monthly newsletter I send out with the links, I have this set to go for tomorrow. I did not put the video in there, I really wanted to get further along with our district improvement plan, continuous improvement plan, the plan, and then I'll maybe share some parts of the plan, but so I think next month I would send that out, or I may send it out as just a link to parents to view it. I also thought about at some point, you know, with the approval go, whether it's parent conference night or open house to have it there, I mean, I think it needs to be out in front, so people can see it.
Like our Kaepernick.
But even coming into a, you're coming into a concert, to have that playing when they walk in a couple of times as, you know, people are gathering, that right there's playing is almost like, you know, what would you call it, a preview of, you know, or an advertisement. And, you know, you can see, you know, we also like to create some type of symbolic representation, where it's one page, and, you know, more than just having it in words, and so we're working towards that. But I think the messaging in a seven-minute video, I looked at other districts, and, you know, they'll have just a simple page, and it's, you know, if you look it up online for, you know, learner outcomes, or you look up vision of a high school graduate, which is a big push by caps, and as well as cave, that's the big push now is to vision of the high school graduate. There's different ways to message it, but I've not seen something messaged this way with the video, so.
Agreed. I think it goes back to what Tim said, we need to capitalize and get it out there. Speaking of cave caps, the gentleman, the author of the book that spoke at the superintendent's thing, is also the keynote speaker at cave's caps. So, it all kind of lines up. Nice job. So, as much as I'd like to say I would entertain a motion to adjourn, we do have an executive session, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session inviting the superintendent, I believe is the only person, and then he's...
Which one?
Just Brian.
All right, I move to enter into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations and invite the superintendent.
I have a motion by Tim, second by Jamie. All in favor?
I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna move on for executive session.
Yes. So, all in favor of executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
So, board members present will attend with exception of Adam Salina.
He's got it from him.
Wait, should I not attend then?
Just found out.
Why is he not? Because of...
You don't want.
I also, because I'm organized, I'm in column.
Yes, yes, so also Julia DeS will now attend as well, so. We are in executive session at 8:41. Nice job.